Two watches does not know what time it actually is. So, let me call this message, this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, simply because I'm really looking forward to doing this, Mr. Colver, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you very much. Please join me in saying Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second, whatever you want to do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There is no report out of.
No, there is a report out of.
Oh, yes. Yes, 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 yes. I've only been doing this since December. Give me a chance. In closed session, the Board took action to enter into a settlement agreement and release with Westburg &amp; White Incorporated in order to resolve claims regarding architectural engineering services for the major's Y, Z, T, and U projects at Carr Elementary, Casimir Middle School, Lincoln Elementary School, Torrance High School modernization, and Torrance High School L&amp;Q. The roll call for vote was as follows: five ayes, zero noes, and zero abstentions. CSEA 845 initial proposal. Forgive me, which one do I read first? Eight point one or eight point two? Eight point one, very good. The CSEA Chapter 845 initial proposal for 2018-2019 will be submitted at the regular meeting of the Board of Education held on July 16, 2018. Perp rules require that no formal response or discussion be held at that, at this time. As you are aware, state law provides that we hold a hearing for public input regarding the CSEA 845 initial proposal for 2018-2019. Copies of the proposal will be available to the public in all city libraries and the Human Resources Department. Time for public comment on the contract proposal will be provided at the August 6, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Okay. Eight point two. The Torrance Unified School District initial proposal to CSEA 845, Chapter 845 for 2018-2019 will be submitted at the regular meeting of the Board of Education held on July 16, 2018. Perp rules require that no former, formal response or discussion be held at this time. As you are aware, state law provides that we hold a hearing for public input regarding the Torrance Unified School District initial proposal to CSEA 845, Chapter 845 for 2018-2019. Copies of the proposal will be available to the public in all city libraries and the Human Resources Department. Time for public comment on the contract proposal will be provided at the August 6, 2018 Board of Education meeting. All right. I believe we are now moved to eight point three, the Nutritional Services Presentation.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Milton. I'm the Director of the Nutrition Services Department, and this is Kathleen Cole, who's a registered dietitian and nutritionist with our department as well. We're going to take a few minutes tonight to share some.
Dover is not.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we give them a moment to the presentation to come up. But in the past, at least the past few years, this presentation really focused on the wellness efforts that the department sort of heads up in our district, and we're certainly going to touch on those. But I'm going to take this opportunity to also share some things, a more bigger picture that Nutrition Services done on a daily basis to try to help support and serve our kiddos here in Torrance. So with that being said, I will wait for the presentation to get up and running so we can all follow along.
Uh-oh.
All right. Technology, exercise impatience for all of us sometimes. So with that being said, some, basically, the primary focus of our department, of course, is to provide a very basic need to our students to help them achieve at school. Certainly, one of the most basic needs that any human being has is food, of course, one of the most basic needs that we can provide. So really, our goal is to feed as many kiddos as we can to get them successful, set up, and ready for the day at school, to achieve, to their potential, and hopefully beyond. We are proud to serve about 5,000 breakfasts per day in the district and also seventy, over 7,700 lunches per day, and those are reimbursable meals, right? So a complete meal that we're able to submit for reimbursement. We also do a lot of business with, outside of the reimbursable meal program, which is an à la carte sort of approach where kids can come in and just purchase sort of not complete meals, but different items through the cafeteria. And we'll talk about some challenges and opportunities that we have with, with those programs in a couple moments, but research has shown that properly nourished kids do better in school, they're better attendance and test scores. Obviously, school meals reduce insecurity, food insecurity, for a portion of our population so they know where their next meal is coming from. And of course, the increase in fruit and veggie consumption definitely leads to overall health benefits. So again, very proud to be making those efforts on a daily basis with our kids. With every challenge, of course, comes opportunity. So some challenges in our program are not unique to Nutrition Services. Many departments in the school district are dealing with some of the same challenges that we have, increasing costs of goods out there. So basically, you know, whether it be fuel or products, you go to the grocery store or the gas station, you always see prices going up, they rarely come down. Obviously, the cost of people is increasing as well. We're all aware of some of the impacts that the retirement system is going to have on both sides of the house, classified and certificated as we move forward. And of course, the new rules that we have, and I say new, they've been in place for about three or four years now called the Smart Snacks in Schools Rule, which came down from the USDA, which really monitors those à la carte sales that we can do outside of the reimbursable meal program. So really putting some more strict regulations as far as nutritional requirements of food that we can sell outside of our program. And the result of those has been a 32 percent decrease in participation in those à la carte sales over the last four years. So that's a real challenge for us. Legislation is always a challenge, you know, of course, the rules governing our program are always pretty dynamic and keep us on our toes. Certainly, this is no exception moving into 2018-19. SB 250, which is a lunch shaming piece of legislation, was put into place in the beginning part of this year on January 1st, and lots of unintended consequences and challenges with implementing that, that piece of legislation to figure out how we can feed kids who aren't, are unable to pay for meals at school. So really working a lot with Dr. Stowe and developing some policies and procedures on how we can combat some of those things to make things much better for our students as we try to get through each day. So again, challenges do present opportunities. So some participation strategies that we're doing to increase the level of reimbursable meal participation, but also à la carte business as well as to continue and improve our student and parent engagement, really talking to the customer, right? You know, talking to the people that we're serving every day, see what do they want? What kind of things are they looking for in the cafeterias? Kathleen works very hard on developing menus that are going to be attractive to kids, that provide lots of variety, but also things that they're going to want to purchase and use that discretionary dollar hopefully in our cafeterias versus somewhere else. Also developed a new department logo, so working on kind of a branding project with the department. And we've also already in the implementation phases right now of a new online menu software system to improve access and also keep our customers informed. So real-time updates as to what's going to be offered in each cafeteria throughout the school district, available digitally in a handheld device for students and parents. So we're excited to get that up and running for 2018-19. Of course, business practices, taking responsible approaches to labor and efficiency, making sure we're being sensible with our, our labor dollar and how we're deviating and assigning those, those labor dollars. Certainly pricing and again, policy and communication with, with the community is critical as well. So we're really focusing in, on those as we move forward. So a lot of things going on, of course, one of which is our wellness policy as well that keeps us all very busy. Torrance Unified, it has a model wellness policy. A lot of districts in our area sort of, you know, ask lots of questions and ask for resources that we're able to provide and really try to model the efforts that we do here in our district. So we're really proud to maintain that effort and to keep those, those things going. We did, as a part of that, support of District LCAP goals, we provide, we do a survey every year. This year, we, again, for the second year in a row, had all 30 schools respond, so we focused on four different groups in that survey, the school sites, health services, student council and ASB officers, and then parents in a volunteer group. So different questions, all the survey results in detail are posted on the Nutrition Services page of the district website, so you can go there and take a look through all the, the responses and information that's there. But you know, we'll just pull out a few highlights for you to discuss this evening. Over 2,700 responses, 89 of those responses were either meeting or seeding expectations of our wellness policy. So that's obviously very high and something to definitely celebrate. 86 percent of our respondents were aware of the, of our wellness policy. So 86 percent of our folks out there know that we have a wellness policy and that we have some responsibility in that policy. So some areas of success to sort of pull out, a couple of graphs there just show, sort of show, again graphically, how there's, we have 0 percent needing improvement. So these are some good things, some that everyone can agree on, that the schools promote a safe, anti-bullying, drug and substance-free environment, they're meeting nutrition standards that are set forth in our wellness policy, the school sites are providing the opportunity for students to be physically active and also have physical education. Our school community, parents and teachers definitely encourage healthy lifestyle for our students, and our district nurses review and support our wellness policy, board policy and protocols as it relates to health services. So again, something to really be proud of and continue to focus on and execute. Areas of opportunity, so some things that, that we can focus on through our Wellness Committee as we move into 2018-19. On the district nurses' side, some opportunities regarding providing non-mandated screenings for students and following up with appropriate referrals, and also health services staff to identify and distribute healthcare insurance information for families that, that may be in need. So again, that's something we'll be working with that department to focus on how we can improve those results as we move into next year. And also, the second thing, or the second, third things, I guess, are sort of interrelated in that nutrition education is something that a lot of respondents said they'd like to see more of, sort of integrated into the education programs. And also going on and securing grants that provide training and materials that are outside of the regular health curriculum. So those things could sort of be molded together, you know, finding some nutrition education opportunities, some grant funding that we might be able to provide to our students is something that we're going to look at as we head through next year as a committee. So with that being said, that's sort of all I have for you tonight, kind of short and sweet, getting to the point. Obviously, I'd be happy to take any questions. You know how to get ahold of Kathleen or I if you do have any specific questions, but really appreciate the opportunity to share, and I hope that this gave you a little bit of an insight as to what Nutrition Services does every day. Yes, sir?
Mr. Stephan?
Yeah, what is it? Well, I think I know what it is, but non-mandated screening. We need a lot of improvement, and it's something that we don't need to do.
Right, right. So it's, it's not required. So it's one of those things where on this, on the wellness survey, asking those health clerks, you know, what sort of things would you like to see done better? These aren't mandated things, these are things that, that they would like to see done a little bit more or improve on. So not a mandate, certainly, but I think something that the health services folks would like to focus on.
Any other questions? You, you spoke very fast.
I did.
How many lunches do we, how many lunches do we serve per day?
About 7,700 reimbursable meal lunches, right? So those are complete meals that have all the required components of a reimbursable meal. We have to offer five different components, they have to take three, one of which has to be a fruit or vegetable. So those are the meals that we submit for reimbursement. So that's really the lifeblood, if you will, of our, of our revenue stream, are those reimbursable meals. But of course, à la carte business is, is a big part of our business as well, but that's of course, you know, on the Sharp D clients, so we're doing what we can to combat those things.
Mr. Lee?
Always got to kick out Chick-fil-A somehow meets the requirements, but that's okay. It's probably why all my kids like that Chick-fil-A sauce. In fact, if you ever read this, it's just an aside because I'm having an ADD moment. We actually looked up how many calories were in the Chick-fil-A sauce, and if you have two Chick-fil-A sauces, it's like equal to the entire sandwich. Oh yeah, it's like, it's incredible. But anyway, because we're all just going like this with the sauce, and we're going, well, that doesn't mean anything.
No, it's probably, sauces, dressings, you know, condiments, ketchups, you know, all those kinds of things, they do have those hidden calories, and that's something that we have to take into consideration in our nutritional analysis, you know, is for writing a menu, how much ketchup is, are the kiddos going to take, how much mustard, mayonnaise?
If you can tell how much ketchup a kid's going to take, you're a smart, smarter person. But on the same note, these cards, I mean, we got Taco Bell, we got Chick-fil-A, we've got whoever else is out there. Do we collect a commission from them? Do we, is this a revenue source for us? How does that work?
Well, I'm not aware of any of those types of sales going on, at least during the school day regarding those, those specific.
But I mean, the cards, the cards.
Sure.
But don't, don't we have outside vendors, or we used to, maybe I just haven't been around.
Everything has ran through us, yeah.
That's the card he's talking about.
Okay, so there's no more Chick-fil-A?
Correct, yeah, so that's a part of that.
So it's literally no fun school. Okay, good. So.
Well, I'll tell you, from, from, you know, a food guy, okay, you know, the, the wellness policy, you know, is, is an unfunded mandate, right? So talk about some of those things that, it's not a mandate, right? It's, there's no real resources that are allocated to it, which again, is a compliment to the district and the investment and buy-in that the, that the community has in, in our wellness program. But it's really difficult because we don't get a lot of support in trying to mandate those things and explaining why to folks, or educating kids as to why the Chick-fil-A or why the Taco Bell or those things might not be good for them. Now, certainly, the regulations require us to get them out of the schools, we've done that, we do still have carts out there, we call them our red carts, so they have à la carte items that they can go buy, and they do all meet the nutritional requirements. But as far as those vendors, we do offer a couple of outside vendors in our program, like pizza vendors and pickup sticks and those kinds of things, but they all are formulated specifically for school nutrition.
Mrs. Regans?
Yeah, actually, I was going to say that up to and including the Domino's Pizza that's served, it is specially formulated to actually meet our, our standards, and I don't know that parents and students are, are fully aware of that, so.
Absolutely.
So what, you just give them the box?
No. They think it tastes good, come on. It is not that bad, Mr. Regan.
It doesn't taste like a box, thankfully.
No, no.
But, no, it's definitely something, you know, to your point, it's something we need to advertise, you know, we're, we're working with other departments in the district, you know, for a health, community health and wellness fair coming up in October, that we're going to be featuring that Smart Slice and be able to try to educate the, the community as well as to. Even though it might be Domino's, they, they don't quite understand that it actually is a Smart Slice, so it's a whole grain crust, it's reduced fat and sodium cheese and tomato sauce and those kinds of things, so.
Next, I did have a follow-up question, because my real question had to do with, you and I have had a discussion about what the materials are on which the lunches are served.
Yes.
And I know we're looking into environmentally friendly materials to try to make sure that we're doing that. And something that occurred to me is the new, well, not the new, but the ongoing sort of focus on straws and learning straws.
Yes.
And that's going to be interesting for you folks.
Certainly, it's, you know, thankfully, and I say thankfully just because, you know, our, our program is so heavily legislated, but thankfully, in that new piece of legislation that's being talked about in Sacramento, basically getting rid of those, you know, single-use straws, nutrition, the school food nutrition services departments are exempt from that rule, so we don't have to follow it. However, from, you know, the court of public perception, right?
To be responsible, yeah.
Certainly. So that, those are definitely things, and I, you know, we're working with manufacturers on that, they're very aware of that. For instance, you know, when we buy our milk, if we buy it in a pouch or a carton, if a kiddo wants a straw, how's it going to work? If, if we don't have a straw, that, how's it, how's it going to work, right? So they're working on different packaging. Also, we have to be cost-sensitive as well, right? We have to make sure that we're being, you know, financially mindful about how we move forward with those things, and manufacturers understand that as well. So it's definitely something that is, you know, any, any way that we can reduce, you know, our waste, our usage, obviously, is something that we want to, want to be conscientious of, all while being, you know, financially responsible and mindful as well. So it's a challenge, there's no two ways about it.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Oral communications on non-agenda items. The Board of Education welcomes input from the public in order to discuss district business in an orderly manner for the privacy and safety of speakers and to help staff respond more directly. The board policies require that public presentations to the board comply with certain procedures, including speakers to non-agenda items may address only items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Time allotted for such presentations is limited to three minutes? Sorry?
You've probably got exactly three minutes, Mike.
Three minutes. Time allotted for public input on non-agenda items is limited to 30 minutes. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another. When addressing the board, speakers are requested to state their name, address the president of the, from the podium, and adhere to applicable time limits. Complaints against employees or students will normally be heard in closed session, and the district's complaint procedures should be followed before discussion with the board. The board may remove disruptive individuals and order the room cleared if necessary. Any person who willfully disturbs any public school meeting is guilty of a misdemeanor, Education Code 32210. We have someone, Susan Hubert, who, W, who wishes to speak about the Friends of Madrona Marsh.
Yes. Good evening, President Wormer, board members and staff. I'm Susan Hubert, and I'm president of Friends of Madrona Marsh, but more fun, I'm also a docent for the Madrona Marsh, and on behalf of myself and other docents, we'd really like to thank you for sending over 1,000 students from Torrance Unified and their parents to the Marsh and Preserve during our docent touring season. We've really enjoyed taking them through the preserves. The teachers prepare them well, they're very well behaved, amazingly well behaved kids, really, I have to compliment you all and, and the schools.
My kids? Sorry.
Mine are gone.
Sadly, though, we're not able to accommodate every tour group, that, every school that would like to book a tour. We, we only do tours from October through the end of May. We only do them on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and they're only offered from 10 to 12 in the morning. We'd like to rectify that because we have had, we've had to turn away some schools, and it's, that's always really sad. So what we're doing is we've put together the design, and we have a proposal to develop a virtual tour. It's essentially, it's a tour that we can take to a classroom, it's a half-hour DVD, we'll bring study skins and water microscope from the marsh, some taxidermy, we'll work with the teacher on exactly what science they're doing in their classroom. And this, the virtual tour is designed to be essentially a tour of the marsh, as if you were there. It starts with the camera inside the school bus, pulling in with all the docents standing on the front, front steps waving, like we actually do. So we are fundraising for that, and I think that, I think that will be a good addition to our programs, and I think it's, will be a good addition for yours as well, because our goal is to have a fifth grade kid go, "Yeah, that was great, can we see it again?" So we really have a goal there. Also, 2018-19, this is the first year the Friends of Madrona Marsh has ever done this, we will be offering our first scholarship. I've been working with Jerry Lynn Moch.
Moch?
Yeah, and it'll be, so far, we have raised funding for one $1,000 scholarship, and we're working on the second one. Be nice if we could do two, but we're very excited to do, to be able to offer one, because I don't know if you've ever been to the marsh on a Saturday, but you're like this with all the high school kids doing service, their service hours there. So we feel it's time to reward them for their interest. And finally, if you'd like to help us with the, developing that video, because we, we do need about $6,000 in funding for that, or if you'd like to contribute to the next scholarship, and you like craft beer, we've got a nice little fundraising package going at Smog City Brewery. 10 percent of all of their profits, not their profits, all of their sales, 10 percent of their sales from 3 to 9 on Thursday will be donated to the Friends of Madrona Marsh. So you can also go on our website and donate specifically to another scholarship, or send us a check, tell us scholarship. It's a tradition with the Madrona Marsh, on the Friends of the Marsh and all of our fundraisers, that our finale is that we howl at the moon. It's, it's a very exhilarating experience if you've never done it. So the last Thursday of this month, we believe we should be able to see a full moon. So if you want to come to Smog City Brewery and support the Marsh and scholarships and whatnot, and have a chance to howl at the moon with us, we'd love to have you. So any questions for me?
I don't have any.
And I believe you have copies of our annual report, gives you some details on what, what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Discussion action items. Instructions to the public. Speakers wishing to address the board on agenda topics are permitted three minutes per topic. Total time granted for public input should be limited to 30 minutes per topic. Board policies require that public presentation of the board comply with certain procedures, including items two through four listed in oral communications. Item 10.2, approval to adopt resolution number AS-01-18/19, implementation of terms and conditions of employment following receipt of recommendations made to the Torrance Unified School District and Torrance Teachers Association by fact-finding panel. I have one card, you need a, a pink card if you wish to address this, I have one card from Deb to Bush.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion, a second.
Need a motion and a second.
I moved it.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mannan. Deb to Bush.
Deb to Bush, TTA president, 1619, Cravens. Good evening, President Wormer, school board members, cabinet, and student representative, but they're not here. The resolution that you are presenting tonight undermines the fundamental trust between TUSD and its employees. It is a violation of the law and is in direct conflict to the fact-finding report in regards to the imposition of the 19, 2019-20 calendar. It is a violation of the fundamental trust between TUSD and their employees. This resolution only serves to politicize this process for the political gain of school board members on the eve of a fall election. It is not only unscrupulous, but damaging to any goodwill that remains between TUSD and its employees.
And now we vote on this. So all those.
Any other, any board comments?
Yeah, any board comments? And Mr. Stephan?
I think everyone knows my history as far as being a union person, as far as being a teacher and things like that. And this is kind of a sad moment, that we broke, the relationship has broken down this way, and it, it didn't need to happen, but it did. This will take years to repair the damage, and the trust and relationship between the district and the union and vice versa. After tonight, one thing must happen, we have to begin serious work on repairing that damaged relationship. There are issues facing us as far as this fact-finding thing. One with the calendar, another one with how changes in the classroom and instructions being implemented, the requirements of LCFF and LCAP, and those target groups that some of those dollars are meant for, foster kids, EL kids, and economically disadvantaged group. And then there was salary. Is salary adequate? Probably not. What funds are not available or are available for across-the-board salaries? Then we get into discussion about base grant versus concentration grants versus supplemental grants. What are the specifics? And we were told in the last meeting, use data. A lot, a lot of things have data, a lot of things don't have data, like calendar. My experience with calendars consists of post-Labor Day calendar starts, pre-Labor Day calendar starts, year-round multi-track calendars, modified year-round calendars, and I've been on probably, you know, three out of the four tracks that were on a multi-track. Did I see any difference in data and outcome? No, I did not. I don't think it really makes a difference. Why change, or why change a calendar or not change a calendar? Well, some people said it's too hot in August. Well, the data shows that August is an average of 73 degrees with a high of 90 degrees, and September is an average of 71 degrees with a high of 102 degrees. So the data says that may not be a very useful argument. Another one is allow students to spend time at sports camps and showcases. Well, that's, I guess that's important for some, but I don't know if that's the, the responsibility necessary of the district. Another one is AP classes, and the assumption is that the AP students will do better with one more week of instruction. There's absolutely no data to support that. The assumption is it, it will happen, but that's an assumption. And another one, which I kind of really hit me as an important one, a measurable amount of students would like to continue education during the summer, to go into internships and to take college courses, but they're not able to do that because we end, we end too late. And finally, our tech department and our counselors have to deal with the new data as far as college, high school transcripts getting to college, and this would allow them to make it an easier transition to make sure all those students get their transcripts incorrectly. And if we oppose, impose a pre-Labor Day calendar, I want everyone to be warned of what I refer to as calendar creep, and if you, you get this, okay, we've done this, well, maybe we can add a day or two to spring break, or maybe we could add a day or two to, to winter break, and all of a sudden, you're right back where you started, and then the only choice is to put the high schools on a separate calendar, which other districts have done. So just be very careful, because that can happen more quickly than not. And the other issue is salary. Given what we know about future budgets, the boards, and all boards must make, use projections. Sometimes projections are too conservative. Sometimes they're too positive. Do employees deserve a larger salary? I think we all probably say yes. The district's last best and final offer on the impasse, before impasse, was 1% plus 1%. The district's offer of 3% after fact-finding was not accepted by TTA. And the last offer by the association was $2,500 bonus and a 4% raise. And all of these have staff reduction possibilities. So next March 15th, with the 1.1, 35 certificated people and 22 classified people will have to be cut. And if the district's 3% offer, 55 certificated, 33 classified. If I make a mistake here, please stop me and make sure I'm doing this right. 33 classified. And if the $2,500 bonus and the 4%, one would be over 90 certificated and 50 classified, all meaning class size changes and all that kind of thing. So there's an effect, no matter which calendar or which raise we choose, or whatever was raised and agreed with, there it's going to be an effect on staff and jobs and class size. And it's also been stated that TSC is trying to protect new hires that we've done. We have done some, a lot of new hires. Some of those are assistant principals, and some of them are intervention staff and counselors and people at the Family Welcome Enrollment Center. And it comes up to about $5 million bucks, I think. I think I kind of rounded that out with you, Dr. Stowe. But these are positions that are paid out of these, are not paid out of unrestricted base grant funds, but rather restricted grants from the state. And the, you know, those, and they're supposed to go towards those identified group of kids. And there might be some sort of argument that you can use those across-the-board salaries, but I think it's pretty clear, especially now that the state is really getting their act together, good or bad, about how those dollars have to be spent. They can't be spent across the board. So we could get rid of all these positions, but we'd have $5 million or so that we'd have to spend towards the education of those students specifically. So it wouldn't necessarily be across-the-board salary raises. And cost, and it was brought up about cost for items like phones, the new phones in Power School over the mail. These are all paid out of one-time funds, so those would not be appropriate for ongoing salaries. Changes. A lot was said about the autonomy of the classroom that has been stripped away. Programs like RTI, collaboration meetings, training, all seem to have diminished, or it was said diminished, the teacher's role. And this is where I truly believe that where things fell apart. The state has implemented these budget restrictions based on the idea that certain groups need more assistance than others. And I'm not blaming either side for the change in the relationship, but we need to look at ways to repair it. I've been in the situation that TUSD and TTA are now, and I suggest that both sides get together quickly and agree that the relationship is damaged and look for ways to fix it. Decades ago, my district and my union needed counseling. We actually got a counselor. And they came in, they talked to us, and we went through training on true interest-based bargaining. And it took a few years for us to trust each other again. But it worked out, and things went better. But it is something that we've got to look at, because this could, if the board imposes this agreement, it's going to take a long time to heal, no matter if we, and if we don't impose it, it's going to take a long time to heal. So what happens? If we don't impose the calendar, impose the calendar, there is no calendar for planning. We walk in, out of tonight, and there's no calendar for planning for parents, there's no calendar for planning for teachers, and when they start, we're back to zero on that. There's no salary increase if we impose this calendar. So everyone walks away, or impose this contract. Everyone walks away with nothing, and we start from scratch without any expectations of success. My confusion is that all members of TTA, TUSD, and the independent chair of the fact-finding committee unanimously agree. This is where I get confused. The fact-finding party is made up of one district representative, one union representative, and a neutral party, for lack of better terms. And everyone agreed to stipulate to the district original 1% plus 1%. And the only thing left on that, on that, that list of things they were going over was calendar. So the beginning, beginning the pre-Labor Day calendar next year or not, the night, okay. And they agreed on beginning, the fact-finding committee agreed, beginning the pre-Labor Day calendar next year, not the 1920 year that the district is going to start, because next year, there won't, if we do what is proposed, there will not be a pre-Labor Day calendar for the 1819 year. And the thing about, that I'm upset about is legally, we are prohibited to impose the last offer we gave, the 3% offer, and the 1920 calendar. If we chose to impose, we must go to our last and final best offer prior to impasse, which is the 1% plus 1%. So there was some money on the table. If we don't impose, the future is put into limbo without any end in sight. If I do vote to impose, I contribute to the diminished relationship, it's a no-win situation here. And so these are just ideas I had. And these are things I wanted to get out of it. And finally, just, so be quiet, not say anything stupid. It's going to take a long time, no matter what happens tonight. And everyone's got to figure it out, get back on it to a table and sit there how to figure out how to fix that. So I'm done.
Any other comments? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to 10.3, approval to adopt resolution number AS-02-18/19 of the Board of Education of the Torrance Unified School District becoming subject to the California Union Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedures, or CUPCCAA. Is the state of California just messing with us with this acronym?
Well, anyway, motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Comments from Mark? I'm sorry.
Aye, but just a comment. Ms. Padilla worked really hard on this. And I know the $15,000 bid limit and these kind of things, but she worked really hard on this. And I would like to, kind of brought us into a new age. It's going to make life a lot easier for your department, I imagine, this thing. So, yeah. So tell her thank you very much.
I didn't realize there was a lot of work internally we did on this.
Yeah, Gio Conda Padilla, our director of purchasing, has spent a lot of time on this, and not just the resolution, but also the board policy that we're asking you to adopt in a couple items from now.
I'm sorry about the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7-letter acronym. I assumed it came from the state of California.
Well, it is the state. It's an allowable process through the state.
Okay, well, give her a thanks from all of us. I didn't realize there's a lot of work on that. Thank you, Mark. Moving on to 10.4, approval of annual declaration of need for fully qualified educators.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did Mario want to speak to that?
Did you want to speak to that, Mario?
It's just, it's a pro forma annual.
We do it every year. And it makes good common sense. Again, Mark, your lights lit up?
No, I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. And approval of proposed board policy updates revisions, first reading?
Mr. President, just for your information, as Dr. Stowe had pointed out, board policy 3311 is, will be a non-conforming policy.
Okay.
We are making a motion to approve the proposed board policies for the first reading and to waive the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that board policy was just for the CUPCCAA change?
Cupca.
I'm not even going to try. I'm not even-
Better than phweck.
Phweck, you don't like phweck?
I don't like phweck.
You don't like phweck, okay. We have now moved to the consent agenda. And is anyone got something they want to pull from all the consent agendas?
Yeah, actually, I did, which is rare, I understand.
Rare statement, yeah.
I want to pull item, or at least I can just make a comment on item. I printed it out, and I can't figure out what number it is. Secondary consent, 14.4.
We can pull 14.4.
Let me just talk about it and approve it all at the same time. This is, I need to print out things bigger. That approval be given to North High School to participate in the architecture, construction, and engineering-based mentor program for the 1819 school year, which I think is like way cool and good, and what we should be doing and all those kinds of things. And I read through it, and they're going to intern in various places. I'm just kind of assuming that Val Forbady might be involved in this, and that certainly, we have, we're down to at least one architectural firm that likes us. So, you know, are they going to participate in this?
This is actually through Project Lead the Way, and so we will find out which other companies might be involved. But at this time, we don't have Val Forbady as part of the program.
Okay, you've got another big architectural firm in town by the name of Malcolm and Widia Malcolm that might want to be part of that, and some other people. Pardon me?
And HMC.
And HMC, and those people. So, you know, I just, I think it's incredible, so good, thanks. That's it?
Mrs. Reggins?
I actually wanted to pull item 17.6.
Okay, do you want to just talk about it, or do you want to pull it?
Pull it.
You can pull it.
Yeah, actually, I do want to pull it, because I want Dr. Stowe to give us some information.
And I make a motion to approve the consent-
Everything except for 17.6.
Agenda except 17.6.
I'll second that.
All in favor of approving everything but 17.6?
Aye.
Okay, discussion concerning 17.6?
I make a motion to approve 17.6.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Reggins?
17.6 is to approve the health benefit rates for Torrance Unified School District employees for the 2018-19 plan year. This is in consent, because it probably is truly a consent item. But I wanted to highlight this item, and I think the reason perhaps will be obvious once Dr. Stowe gives us some information about whether the benefit rates are increasing or not, and how long it's been, we've been stable.
So, thank you, Mrs. Reggins and members of the board. This is the third year that we've been able to keep rates the same for health benefits. And quite honestly, it's the result of funds that we collect through our, because we're self-insured. So these are funds that we collect from employees or are part of the contribution that the district makes on behalf of employees that go unspent. And so we then roll those back into the rates to buy down what the real rate would be. I think the real rate would have been about 15% higher than this. And there's an insurance committee that has representatives from all the different bargaining units and associations that meet monthly. And we meet with representatives from Mercer, who's our third-party administrator with regard to our health insurance rates. And they work with Pinnacle and the different people that we broker with. And so, you know, this, it really is about, and will continue to educate our employees on making sure that they make good choices with regard to health and welfare benefits for themselves and their families, and utilize it when they need it, but don't abuse it. And these are, like I said, additional funds that are generated by those that use the plans, specifically the TUSD plan, that goes back into their pockets, so to speak.
Great. And actually, I wanted to highlight it, because I actually have a lot of pride that we have been able to maintain that rather than increasing it year by year, which is what many people are experiencing from their employers. So that's a wonderful thing that's directly benefiting many, probably not most, not all, but most of our employees. And I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you for the work.
It's those healthy lunches. It's those fruits and vegetables and hefty lunches.
No more Chick-fil-A.
Could be, could be. Might have something to do with it.
Okay. All those in favor of 17.6?
Aye.
All right, we now move to board comments. I'm not skipping over revisions to administrative regulations. I am, aren't I? Board calendar is 19.1. Lots of good information there. 19.2, Torrance Unified School District and El Camino Community College District enter into a partnership agreement to offer college and career pathways to high school students.
Just information.
Just information only, okay? Revision to administrative regulations is again information only, and the willing reporting requirements, we're always complying there, so. Comments from the board? I am going to miss the August meeting. I'm going to be out of town for the SoCal Rock meeting. And I was taken back by Mark's comment, so I didn't comment. We are going to release a letter concerning the new calendars to teachers, letter and email to teachers tomorrow. And it's also going to be on our website. Mr. Mar is going to update our website to reflect the 1819 and 1920 calendars starting tomorrow. So I wanted to comment on that. The only change that's going on at SoCal Rock, I'm mixing my vegetables here. The only change going on at SoCal Rock is we are in the process of getting approved the $25 charge. So we should be seeing that as opposed for, if you're there for less than a week, we should only be charged $25.
Which is a big improvement.
Huge improvement. I'm assuming Ms. Chai and SoCal Rock are working those numbers out?
I would assume. I have not had a report from Ms. Chai.
I wouldn't want to get in a room with her when she's in a bad mood, so.
You do not.
But I'll let her work that out with SoCal Rock's people. Our interests will be well protected, so. Mr. Lee?
Election season is on us now. Filing as, it's the eight people that are out there watching this. But filing opened today if you wanted to run for school board in November. It opened today, the 16th, and it will be open until August 10th, and then extended five days if a non-incumbent does not file for reelection, which I suspect it possibly could happen.
I'm not running.
Okay, so I didn't want to put words in Mark's mouth there. So probably you have between now and August 15th to decide that you want to join this merry band. And so, and that, just figured I'd put that out there, especially since I don't have to run this time. So that even makes it more fun. So that's out there, and that's it. And everybody have a great summer. And who won the home run derby contest, do we know?
Oh, I don't know.
France won the World Cup.
France did win, Bryce Harper won. That's what it looked like, so good, okay, there we go.
Yesterday. Let's go ahead, Mrs. Reggins.
Yeah, I just had a couple of additional things I wanted to highlight there. There is a classified anniversary on the agenda that I wanted to recognize.